I will now call the September 18th, 2017 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you would, stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on cable TV, to tonight's City Council meeting. Next, we have the consent agenda, or the items to be pulled, if not, accept a motion for approval.
Sir, move.
A second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levy.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on a 2017 property tax levy.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form dated September 7th, 2017, from Assistant City Administrator Christine Kates, with the following attachments. Notice of 2017 preliminary aggregate assessed valuation. Notice of public hearing is published in the examiner on August 26th, 2017, and Bill Number 4516 establishing the 2017 property tax levy. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Ms. Kates?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are setting the 2017 property tax levy for the city's portion only of the tax levy that will be on the property tax bills that go out toward the end of November for both personal and real property. The levy proposed tonight includes a mandatory rollback of less than one cent from .7281 to .7184. This is due to the fact that 2017 is a reassessment year for property tax, and the total assessed valuation for 2017 has increased by $40,071,408, or 5% total, which includes also $4.7 million in new construction. If you take out the new construction, the overall increase is 4.41% in property tax values this year. The proposed levy of .7184 includes a property tax levy for the general fund of .5684 cents per $100 of assessed valuation, and then also 15 cents per $100 of assessed valuation for the debt service fund. That levy could actually be higher based on the calculations, but the voters in August 7th, 1990, and then reconfirmed on August 5th, 2008 with a no-tax levy vote, has limited that to 15 cents, and so we carry that forward. Those are all the comments I have, and if you have any questions?
Any questions from the council?
The only thing that I would add is, contrary to what some people might believe, the city receives very little property tax. That's not our means of revenue, so...
That's right. Our total property tax revenues for both the general fund and the debt service fund are about $7 million each year.
All right. Thank you. We'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? In support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. All right. Who would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay. There was a tie, and the other one takes second.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4516, an ordinance establishing the property tax levy for 2017.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
The second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4516, an ordinance establishing the property tax levy for 2017.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilman Levy.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4685.
Next, we have a public hearing on a rezon of Calamar Senior Housing.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form dated September 12th, 2017, from Community Development Director Scott Allen, with the following attachments. Planning Commission staff report with attachments: site location map, site aerial map, affidavit of publication in the examiner on August 26th, 2017. Application with attachments: 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, letter of support from Haldex Brake Products Corporation dated September 7th, 2017, and Bill Number 4517 approving the rezoning. This is all we have to offer for the record.
All right. Thank you. You're up.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is a request to rezon property from SO ADPO Service Office Adams Dairy Parkway Overlay to MF-18 ADPO High Density Multifamily Adams Dairy Parkway Overlay. The subject property is located immediately east of the Adams Point Golf Course and contains approximately 7.8 acres. The applicant is requesting to rezon the property to develop a multifamily apartment building that is intended to provide independent living for seniors. The 2014 Conference of Plan identifies the subject property as a corridor reinvestment area, which encourages a mix of employment-dominated land uses and high-density residential development. This mix of land uses provides housing options in close proximity to commercial, retail, and services, providing new residents for long-term support to those areas. This mix of use also allows more trips to be completed by walking and biking, which is a goal of the Conference of Plan. The applicant has discussed their plans with Haldex, located approximately 400 feet to the east of the site, and they have submitted a letter of support of the proposed development. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning request at the September 11th meeting, and the rezoning is consistent with the rezoning review criteria and the 2014 Conference of Plan, and staff recommends approval of the request. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Wright?
I guess it's for interstate frontage, a lot of times, residentials, residents don't like going to interstate frontage because there's quite a lot of noise there, but this applicant must know the challenges involved with that and still wants to pursue, correct?
They did state in the Planning Commission public hearing that that is one of the things that they look for, is having visibility from a major highway.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Matt. Does a developer like to come and make any comments? Want to ask that you be sworn in?
My name is Jerry Hill. I'm the Midwest Development Director for Calamar, Inc. I operate out of Kansas City, but our technical office for the Midwest is 6614 South, 118th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137. Mr. Mayor, council members, I appreciate the chance to talk to you briefly today, and then I'll answer any questions that you have. Just a little bit about our company. Calamar is about 30 years old. It's headquartered just outside of Buffalo, New York. We have about 30 independent-living senior housing communities across the country. We build, own, maintain, and operate our facilities. We've never sold a facility that we have built. In the Midwest, we have three facilities, in Omaha, two in Des Moines, three in the Kansas City metro area. We have the project known as the Springs in Independence, Bucrest, which is in Kansas City, north of the river, and just opened last month, the Grand Estates on Greenwood in Olathe. We're also currently going through the internal process for a facility, for a community in Shawnee, Kansas. This facility will have 132 units. It will be an independent-living facility. It will not provide medical care to residents. There is significant programming that's provided for the residents. This will include in this facility a lounge, a library, a community room, a game room, a theater, a yoga room, a workout room, a classroom, a chapel, and then a number of outdoor amenities and exercise areas. Just to give you an idea, our typical resident, it varies, you must be 55 years old, but our typical resident is a 72-year-old, single female resident. About 60% of our residents sell a home to move into our facilities, and about 40% are renting before they move in. And most of our residents come within 15 to 18 miles of the facility. So from those stats, you realize there are people in the community no longer want to maintain a home, but want to stay in the community where they've been living. We have very little turnover. Once people move in, they stay until they need a higher level of care. Because of the age of our residents, there's very low traffic, trash, noise, those kinds of things. Our criteria, among our criteria, is we seek to be near retail and medical facilities so they're convenient for the residents, and of course, this location is dynamite on those criteria. There's a high demand for this type of facility in eastern Jackson County. I've been to almost all of them, and virtually all of them have a waiting list to obtain independent-living facilities in eastern Jackson County. We seek to be good neighbors. We own, we stay, and so we look forward to being in the Blue Springs community. I'm glad to answer any questions. I also have Dan Foster here, who with Slegman &amp; Associates, our engineer, and if you have technical questions, he'd be able to answer those.
Were there any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Now, we're going to go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? In support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Great.
First reading of Bill Number 4517, an ordinance rezoning property from SO ADP Service Office Adams Dairy Parkway Overlay to MF-18 ADPO High Density Multifamily Residential Adams Dairy Parkway Overlay.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
The second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4517, an ordinance rezoning property from SO ADPO Service Office Adams Dairy Parkway Overlay to MF-18 ADPO High Density Multifamily Residential Adams Dairy Parkway Overlay.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levy.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4686.
Next, we have a motion for the second reading of Bill 4514, as amended, approving the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget.
Move the bill, move the budget be approved on second reading, reading, and given the appropriate ordinance number?
Oh, you have to read it?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, hold up until she reads it.
The second reading of Bill Number 4514, as amended, an ordinance approving, adopting, and appropriating the annual operating and capital budgets of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, for the fiscal year October 1, 2017, through September 30, 2018.
Okay, now...
Now, I move it be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second?
Second.
Yeah, a second. And a discussion. Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. Since the first reading, I just wanted to say that we did hear quite a bit, and I think you responded to a lot of emails on it, and I know Councilman Culpepper did as well, relative to the bus service. It sounds like there may have been some miscommunication that, out to our citizens, and I think all of us probably got a lot of telephone calls, et cetera. It's been out there in our budget that we were going to take out one of the four routes, right? One of the four buses, and we've been consistent in that since August 1st, and that proposal. But it sounds like some of our citizens maybe got confused that we were going to eliminate the bus service, and so that was kind of misinformation, and wanted to let the citizens know that I heard you, I think we all did, and hopefully this clarifies the action taken tonight. Unfortunately, with the lower ridership in the bus service, one of the routes is going to have to be taken out.
You know, and to add to that, basically, what we've done is, we've gotten back to the level of ridership it was prior to 2008, when we added the fourth bus, because gasoline prices were so high, you had more people riding the bus. But now, we're back to those levels that we were preceding that, so, yeah, thank you for that, making that point. Councilman Levy?
On that note, I too got the same emails and calls, and what I tried to communicate is ultimately KCATAs, who's making those decisions about which bus gets cut and where the routes go, and we have zero control over that besides just communicating our interests. And so, it's unfortunate, or just part of the problem, that we just have zero control over what's happening with that process.
Yes. Any one else?
I appreciate Councilman Kayler's points earlier today. He said, hey, you know, in addition to all the funding that we do do for the bus service, we actually provide some parking for all those folks, and clear it off in the wintertime with, you know, plying and things like that, so. When you think about the total cost, there's quite a lot of money that goes towards the bus service.
Absolutely.
In addition to just the KCAT costs.
Anyone else?
I have something else, not about the bus, but...
Okay.
Okay. Well, I thought I'd at least continue the conversation a little bit regarding the recycling center. I think we had some communication from staff this week, so some of it would just be necessary for discussion, because I don't know if there's interest in moving on some of those options that staff mentioned. But I think, going back to our first reading, I think maybe Councilman Edmondson had much of the information that we talked about, but just didn't quite a chance to present it. I think what staff suggested when we talk about implementing a fee was a kind of a projected number. I think that was the piece missing in the first reading, when Councilman Edmondson tried to present his plan, is ultimately what the budget is, is a grouping of projected revenue, because we can't predict how much revenue we're going to get in the coming fiscal year, and then the corresponding projected expenditures. So I think that is what we just needed to do, move on last time. I think there was some confusion as to what his plan was suggesting. If we implement a fee of some kind, that will create projected revenue. And so, the balance we've been looking for in creating a balanced budget doesn't even necessarily have to come from any cuts, depending on what we determine is a projected revenue for that fee. So we have the historical that the staff has provided for us, of last year having 34,000 trips to the recycling center. Even if you assume those were all residents, and zero of those were non-residents, at $3 per trip, that's well over $100,000. And I think we can safely say that with the closing of the Independence Recycling Center and the Lee Summit Recycling Center, many of the people that are visiting the Blue Springs Recycling Center are non-residents, and which would pay maybe a higher fee, as staff suggested and as Councilman Edmondson suggested. If staff is more comfortable having some kind of concrete cut, I'm comfortable at least bringing up for discussion the hazardous waste, because I think it's a comparable situation. I know we usually get a lot of use for that, but it's a MARC program ultimately, and not a Blue Springs program. So for us to remove ourselves from that, I think that would be reasonable to discuss, a good trade-off, not the bus service, as was suggested last week. So I think an appropriate motion would be just to add the projected revenue to maintain opening the recycling center, maybe give at least a little more time for the Solid Waste Commission to review it and monitor it over time, and if we need to reduce the number of days we're open to save costs, we can do that. If we need to increase the fee because to offset it, we can do that. Or even in the middle of the fiscal year, if we need to shut it down because we're losing money, we can do that also. But I think it's short-sighted to just shut down the recycling center as of October 1, and not at least give some opportunity for one of these to work. So I'd be open for comments, and I'm not making any motion yet. We'll kind of see where things go.
Anyone like to make a comment? Councilman? We're going to start now. One announcement, Culpepper.
Yeah. You know, I've been looking a lot into this recycling. Glass, if someone wants to recycle glass, there is a ripple container at Price Topper South, there's a ripple container at Price Topper North. There's your recycling for your glass. There are several stores in our community that recycle plastic, and they will tell you, even at checkout, if you have a lot of, because I've said, well, I don't know what to do with all this plastic, bring it back. We recycle it. So we do have access to recycling. And frankly, rather than driving all the way across town to pay a fee to recycle, if I have glass, I'd just soon drop it off when I'm doing my grocery shopping. Or we also have all of our trash services that are offering recycling. They'll bring you bins, and I've heard people say, well, it's co-mingled. And we have to understand, when they talk about co-mingling, they're talking about co-mingling recyclables only, not mixing it in with your trash, because they take that recycled tin, and they take it down to Harrisonville, and they have their own way that they want to segregate it out for resale. So they're not talking about mixing it with your trash. It is still segregated by the trash companies. So I will just leave that. I would feel that it's up to individuals to take care of their recycling and be good stewards.
Councilman Carter?
I was going to say, to Councilman Levy, the flip side of the coin that you just had was, the other municipalities have closed their recycling centers. The school district has closed its recycling center. I confirm with WCA, which is my trash hauler, that for $5 a month, they'll add recycling. So I don't see why in the world anyone would put all their stuff in their car and take it to our recycling center for a fee. That doesn't make any sense to me. So I would not support keeping the recycling center open at the expense of any other program that we have.
Councilman Edmondson, and then we'll go down this way.
Yeah, thank you, sir. As Councilman Levy said, I probably did a poor job, and I apologize to this group for that, of making that presentation and a motion. What I would like to do would be, based on the information that our city manager gave us, possibly come back later on with a proposal that would outline fees, costs, projections. I know Councilman Culpepper is a numbers woman, and I've got some numbers that I can go back and put together and try to come up with a plan that would maybe suggest that we reopen the recycling center. We have the location. I mean, it's a good location, people know where it's at, so if I could come back and justify why we should be able to do this, and where we can come up with the monies to be able to fund this, and deal with it on a separate occasion, whether that needs to go through the Solid Waste Commission, or if I can do it straight through here, but I would more than happy to work with staff to try to do that. It was good to see that our city administrator took the effort, and staff took the effort to try to put some information together and come up with a couple of plans. He didn't completely write off recycling, and I don't think we should as a city. So I don't know whether Councilman Levy wants to go ahead and try to make a motion, or at this point, I would say, hold off, and let's come back when we have a plan, and maybe we can all get together and back as one group.
Down this way. Anybody else like to comment?
I'd just like to comment on a couple of things mentioned. The most recent citizen survey we have is from 2014, so it's relatively dated. But in that survey, it said 30% of our residents use the Pink Hill Recycling Center. So if you extrapolate that out of the population, that's 15,000 residents that said they used that recycling center on at least a monthly basis. And actually, at the time, 33% said, we needed another recycling center down on the south side of Blue Springs. And that was before the school started closing them down. So I would say to Councilman Carter, because other surrounding communities have closed theirs down, and because the school district have it, that means there's a market there for us to do it. And I think if done right, and depending on how the projections play out, this could actually be a revenue maker for us. If people start using it more often, and we, you know, do it all right. So I'll defer to Councilman Edmondson's plan to hopefully discuss it on a later date, but I still think there is an opportunity here, and I think we should pursue it.
Let me tell you where I'm coming from. I have consistently urged residents to become involved and make their thoughts and wishes known to the Solid Waste Commission. And I'm not looking for a Band-Aid approach, I'm looking for a sustainable, long-term solution on how do we deal with that issue. And a place for that to happen would be with the Solid Waste Commission, getting citizens' input, and I have not given up on the idea, because we don't have a single local hauler now that was in main opposition last time, to maybe dividing this city up into quads and having a single hauler contract through the city, which means we put the rules and regulations on it. If you want the contract, this is what you got to abide by. But those are things that I think need to be vetted with the Solid Waste Commission, and let them come back with a recommendation to this council on which route, which way we should go. So anyway, that's just my thoughts on it. So, but anyway, I thank you for bringing it up so we can further discuss it, because Blue Springs is a city on the move and on the right track, and we want to continue to be that city, that sitting on a hill.
Is there any other discussion? Otherwise, we're going to take a vote. Roll call, please.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levy.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4687.
Next, we have introduction, we're going to be of 4518.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
All right.
First reading of Bill Number 4518, an ordinance amending Section 35501 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri, by adding a new paragraph prohibiting parking on the west side of northeast Waterfield Drive between northeast Waterfield Place and northeast Waterfield Village Drive, on the east side of northeast Waterfield Drive from northeast Waterfield Place to 375 feet south, on the north side of northeast Waterfield Place between northeast Waterfield Drive and northeast Newport Place.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
The second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4518, an ordinance amending Section 35501 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri, by adding a new paragraph prohibiting parking on the west side of northeast Waterfield Drive between northeast Waterfield Place and northeast Waterfield Village Drive, on the east side of northeast Waterfield Drive from northeast Waterfield Place to 375 feet south, on the north side of northeast Waterfield Place between northeast Waterfield Drive and northeast Newport Place.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levy.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4688.
We will go to merril announcements. Our thoughts and prayers continue to be with the people that's affected by all the hurricanes, and I think it's more this year than I can remember in a long time. Hurricane Harvey, Irma, Jose, Maria, and I hear something about Brother Lee trying to come ashore somewhere. So anyway, just be with those, your thoughts and prayers with those people, because it certainly is going to change their lives when they have privacy like that. The next thing I want to say is, on a very high note, with mixed emotions, our Chief of Police is retiring at the end of this month after 15 years of service, and his wife Sheri is in the audience, sitting there with Deputy Chief. I don't know if you remember this or not, when I first met you and Sheri, and I was in the House of Representatives, and if my memory serves me well, we were at an arts dedication over at the Adams Points Conference Center, and we welcomed you in as the new Chief of Police for the city of Blue Springs. And since that time, I had about a five-and-a-half-year sabbatical before I got back into elected office and became Mayor of Blue Springs. And after being Mayor of Blue Springs, Chief and I have spent many, many, many times at DARE graduations, and I must say, Blue Springs is probably the only community that I know of where the Chief of Police and the mayor show up for every DARE graduation. That sends a strong message to the fifth graders, that they have the support of the city. And the other one is, he gives me such a wonderful introduction at the Citizens Police Academy initial meeting, and also at the Citizens Police Academy graduation. So those things are be memories I'll always have. So we just thank you for your 15 years of service, Chief.
Mayor, it has been my honor to serve the community of Blue Springs, and I am very proud of what I consider the best police department in the metro area, and maybe quite a bit beyond that. The employees and the city council and all the support that I have received in the past 15 years is next to none. And as I told, when I came here, I only promised them I would stay for five, so apparently it was a pretty good place, and it's my intent to remain in the Blue Springs community after I retire.
That's great. Thank you so much, again.
Thank you.
Falsdipanda, tonight comes from Titus Litibus, and I quote, "We fear things in proportion to our ignorance of them," end quote. I don't have any visitors' appearance forms, do I? So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries. We adjourn.[1798.38]